Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the executive briefing. It's good to see so many people here.
Executive meeting?
Yes.
So, just a couple of housekeeping events. The chairman of the overall scrutiny, where you see we've got a report 111, will be stepping up to introduce that paper. And Mark Ashwell, who's a deputy to Philip on the regeneration, will be introducing the item 119, the model for community asset transfer. Mark, as a deputy, because he's a deputy, will not take part in any votes when we come through. That's down to the executive member. So, without further ado, let's move on. Any apologies?
Chairman, no apologies.
Okay. Minutes from previous meeting, pages 7 to 18. Any issues, or can I sign them?
I have one apology to make, which I think is only right that I do, based upon the comment from Peter Humphers at the last meeting regarding the fact that previous civic centre complexes have been planned. And despite me consulting the oracle at my side by quiet, it was proved to be correct. So, my apologies to Peter Humphers, sir.
Thank you. I'm sure he will be recording. Any other comments, otherwise I'll sign them as a trim record. Any declaration of interest?
Yes. You can't declare interest on the basis that my husband's a member or director of the local council.
Anthony?
Some of these are directed by the chairman of the council. I have an interest on that to say my turn.
Okay, thank you. So, no move into public question time. Is Chris Hocking here?
Ah, yes.
Sorry, I do apologise.
I've had a name spelt wrong with the public question mark as well.
The first question I have. Bearing in mind the error in stating the reason for raising the car park charges, what confidence do I have in knowing that the council has made an accurate estimate of the numbers of people parking their cars in council car parks in the evenings and weekends? What figures did they use? How did they go about the assessment, et cetera? I would like to see the figures that were used. I should say, I'm not against raising the charges, just how they're going to be raised. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mr. Hocking. An evening and Sunday parking survey was carried out in late February 2016, which counted the usage of each of the car parks on a two-hour basis from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Saturday evenings, and 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sundays. The data was used to estimate the income from the proposed charges. Evening charging is based on 10% of the average daily usage, and Sunday charging is based on 50% of the average daily usage. And inevitably, any income forecasts are an estimate, as we cannot always accurately predict how users will respond. However, from our experience and other charging changes, we reflect that by putting in our own resistance, normally in our forecasts of around 10%.
Do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you. Bearing in mind, I'm talking about the charges. In your responses that you listed to the objections, you mentioned several issues, and these are all cost-related. You talk about introduction of parking enforcement officers. Surely, that's going to be a cost that will negate any profit that you make from raising the charges. Then you talk about on-street parking enforcement. That's obviously going to involve a cost to the detriment of any profit that you're going to make or increase in that you're going to make. From my own personal aspect, I think you've underestimated the social impact that you're going to have on raising these charges. I use the Woodley Town Council Oakwood Centre. We get on very well with the council there. I'm a member of the Woodley Photographic Club. And increasing the charges, not only with us but for other clubs, could have a detrimental effect on our usage of the premises and the attendance that we get. So, I'd like you to reconsider your proposal to introduce evening and Sunday charges and make it for an increase in the daily rate.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Hocking. We, and I have a number of other questions to answer, one of them does involve Woodley around the car park community. We have to make some pretty difficult decisions, because the council would have to take it into the council. If, and we have had a large number of responses to the consultation, and if somebody comes up with something which could supplement that or replace that income that we're likely to lose going forward, then we would always listen to it. And I think you will hear, and I'll answer some of the other questions, that we have listened to the consultation. And so, I just need to bear with me and hang on for it, to listen to the other questions.
Okay. Thank you. And apologies for misspelling your name. But we have the deputy leader of the town council to ask the next question. Councilor Delinsky.
Thank you, Mr. John. Right, so, Woodley Town Council, the Town Centre Management Initiative, and the local business owners are very concerned that introducing a flat rate fee of £1 for Sundays and after 6:00 p.m. in the evening will not achieve the additional income required from Woodley's car parks to balance Wokingham Borough Council's books, will deter visitors to the town centre. Recognising that additional income is required, the Town Council and the TCMI suggested in its consultation response that it would be better to increase the hourly parking charge that has been frozen for many years under a Conservative-led council from 70 p an hour to 80 pence. This has multiple benefits, in that the income from this approach would be extremely higher than the new evening and Sunday charges, and is more acceptable to Woodley residents and businesses, and demonstrates you have acted upon a consultation response. Would the lead members support this for Woodley, in consideration of the concerns of businesses and the fears for those living in the town centre, that drivers would simply park in residential roads?
Thank you, Councilor Delinsky.
An evening and Sunday parking survey was carried out in late February 2016, which counted the usage of each car park on a two-hour basis from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Saturday evenings, and 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sundays. This data was used to estimate the income from the proposed charges, and this was linked compared with an estimate of income from increasing the hourly charge by 10 p. The data showed that the evening and Sunday charges are most likely to increase revenue beyond what we would have been able to raise by increasing the hourly charge by 10 p. However, I understand there is an opportunity to be flexible about car parking charges, car parking regime across the borough, and there's no specific reason for absolute consistency in the charging structure. On this basis, I'm prepared to trial and increase in the hourly charge in the Woodley Car Park in lieu of the evening and Sunday charging. We will monitor this over the next 12 months and compare it with the income generated in other areas, with a view to reviewing the overall charging regime at the end of 2016 to 2017, financially.
Do you have a supplementary?
It's not a question, I just want to say, on behalf of Woodley Town Council and the Town Centre Management Initiative, I'd like to thank councillor Kaiser. It's encouraging to note that consultation demonstrates yet again that the views of businesses, residents are listened to and are valued.
Thank you, councillor Kaiser. Thank you. Philip Medlicott, I see you in the front row, please step forward and ask your question.
Thank you, chairman. I've only just returned from holiday this evening, and my question has printed on the yellow paper. I think a little copy and pasting is on a miss, so I will read my question as I think I presented it. It's not going to fundamentally change things, but it does make better sense. I wish to draw attention to the lead member, and indeed, the whole of the executive, to the lack of any concrete recommendations to improve parking at Twyford Station. This is in the report that you are going to be receiving later in the evening's meeting. Where cross-rail services at Twyford, added to those from GWR, are going to provide increased passenger traffic and car parking needs, the report, as far as Twyford is concerned, only offers a proposal to appoint external consultants to review a park-and-ride possibility. The executive needs to be aware that GWR has changed its mind since October 2015, where there was a meeting at Winter Gill Hall facilitated by the Royal Borough, where GWR CEO claimed that there were no plans at that stage to improve facilities at Twyford. That was vigorously contested by WOG, the Wargrave Training User Group, which I lead, and with generous support from Terezamay, RMP. Earlier this month, however, Mark Hopwood changed his mind and publicly declared the need for improved car parking at Twyford, and this was prominently reported in the Twyford Advertiser. However, reading the report, I feel that Wokingham Borough Council does not appear to be engaged in this change of plan. Will the lead member, therefore, please clarify, especially given the extra time that has been given for him and the executive to digest this report, which was published over two months ago, just where the borough stands in facilitating the provision of significantly improved car parking at Twyford Station?
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Philip. I think you spoke in the last few words in first-name terms. The councils had discussions with both the operators, GWR and Network Rail, about the issues of parking at Twyford Station. All parties are well aware of the pressure on the site and the desire for more parking to be made available. The council was supported of the bid for GWR for the government funding to increase the size of the station car park, but the bid was not successful. As stated in the question, there is a proposal for a very limited increase in spaces at the station car park, and this is currently being considered by officers. This is an addition for these spaces that we're looking at for the moment, in conjunction with GWR. The site of the station in Twyford means there are limited opportunities to provide additional parking, other than the station car park itself. The station and its car park are operated by GWR, and such the form of the car park and its operators outside our control. We will continue to work with the operator to develop options, but there's no immediate plan for any significant increase in the number of spaces at Twyford Station. We do, however, have plans for significantly improving the bus service from Twyford to Wokingham, and this will offer some commuters a viable alternative option to travel to and from the station, and may help to reduce the pressure on the car park. I do have some other information I've imparted, but before I do, would you like to ask your supplemental?
And the comment upon which you've just said, it would appear that your remarks don't take into account the latest moves by GWR for a one- or two-day car park. That is what I surmise from what you've said, and I think that needs to be brought up to date. I think I would have had, there would be more credibility for me in your reply if you'd mentioned that Wokingham Station and its car park, which was revamped two years ago, was down under the NSIP programme, that is not mentioned in the report at all. Chairman, NSIP means National Station Brewer Programme, run by Network Rail. That said, my supplementary, chairman, councillor Kaiser and the executive, I think, need to take note that the report's only recommendation for improving car parking at Wargrave Station is, and I express it with a careful thought, absurd. Page 50 of the minutes and paragraph 11 dot 32. The double-yellow lines at the junction of Station Road and Waterman's Way, which the report considers should be removed and would permit, I suggest, about six extra spaces, were installed about 10 years ago to permit boat-delivery vehicles to access and leave Bushnell's Marina safely and avoid the junction being blocked by parked vehicles. Will the lead member, chairman, confirm the absurd recommendation to remove the W overlines? Will be ignored?
While John's thinking about it, can I just come back as well? Those are the recommendations of the working group that was spawned from scrutiny, as you know. We will be looking at those, and deciding whether they're appropriate or not. So, your comments on the W overlines, it's 10 years ago, I was probably doing the highways job, put them in, we will be looking whether it's appropriate or not.
I appreciate my question is ahead of time.
John?
Yes, if I just update you on, we do have a meeting tomorrow, we do GWR, we'll be speaking to them about our plans around the station car park. I'm not quite sure whether they will dump their car park, because they've only got another two years, I believe, to run the franchise, so they may not see that investment coming forward from them. When, if they're successful, winning the franchise, I expect they will. There are other solutions at Twyford, they do involve some discussions with some of the local people, and that's something that we will be taking forward. The other thing that we will be doing as well, and please make reference to it, is we are implementing civil parking enforcement next year. And civil parking enforcement, we're actually, as part of that process, we do, we need the traffic laws that we've got out there to make sure that they're sensible, that they meet the latest regulations, and that's why it takes nearly two years to get civil parking enforcement implemented. But yes, with regards to Twyford, it is something we are concerned about, we see cross-rail in 2019, and it's something we're in constant discussion with the moment. So, I can't be saying more than that, but we are looking at something a lot wider than currently would be apparent to anybody looking at this report.
So, thank you very much for your question. The next question is Peter Muster, this evening. Step forward and ask your question.
The objections raised to the introduction of a one-down charge for evening, Sunday and bank holiday use of council car parks must be unique in coming from every sector of the local community. Commercial and retail businesses, stall holders, events organisers, disability groups, heritage organisations and residents, leaving one to wonder what it takes in a month where the chance of the exchequer is abandoned and proposed cuts to PIPs because of public discontent. For the public of this borough, it was so the council not to proceed with a measure that's so widely proposed. So, can councillors please listen to the people and find some other ways of raising revenue? And just if I may ask a question within that, since you say, if you can come up with any other suggestions, please let us know, can I assume that you will actually be allowed in time before the implementation of the proposals, if you do go ahead, for those suggestions to come forward?
John?
Again, Peter, where he speaks, I don't want to use your first name again. We did receive around 400 responses to proposals to introduce an evening weekend park, and the vast majority were opposed to the introduction of the charge. And very few did suggest an alternative, as we've seen with Woodley. They did come forward with an alternative. All these responses were read, and we did read them all, and 400, even though I can tell you I read them all, and consider the light of pressure on the council to find additional income and make savings. All car parking income is used to fund the upkeep and improvement of the council's road network. The cost of this service is largely dependent on the cost of materials used, and of course, that all got up in cost, but the main is the cuts that we're actually enjoying, I guess you could describe it as, from the government, and without finding additional income. There are services that we would have to cut, and those services would fall in a lot of cases on the weaker section of the population, and we'd need a deterioration of the borough's road network. I didn't come into this job to put up the prices, I'm a Conservative, and I didn't come into this to cut the services to the most vulnerable. We are placed in a fairly difficult situation, but I will take your recommendation away and discuss that with my colleagues with regards to what we do, but please understand every month that ticks by means that money is not available for us to spend in the more vulnerable people of our borough.
Thanks very much. Second, I'll make a clarification. Could it be quite clear whether it's £1 for the limits of parking for these two hours or three hours that are normally imposed, which is what I've been told by the regeneration team, that a pound will buy you two hours or three hours? Whether it's a pound for the whole period between the normal closure of the daytime regime or the Sunday regime? Is it just £1 for the whole period? Was it £1 for three hours or four hours or two hours?
I'm told it's £1 for the whole period.
Yeah. I wonder if you can clarify that with the regeneration team, since when I raised an objection, I was told that there was going to be a limit of three hours or whatever was imposed.
Okay, I will do this, but as far as I know...
I was told that you didn't...
Okay. All right. I'll answer another question that will bring you to the side, and cover that.
At least it is a whole day.
All right. Thank you, Peter.
Moving on to the last question, Keith Morgan. Would you like to step up and ask your question?
Yes, question to the current executive member for planning highways, it reads the following. The vision for the borough...
Keith, I won't give you the answer, just a...
No, I'm a patient man. I came here two months ago, I've been to another meeting about car parking...
We're expecting the pound to come again, please.
The pound has gone to a very good cause. Matt Davies is leaving. Yes, okay. Anyway, I carry on. The vision for the borough is a great place to live, an even better place to do business, and that is followed in the vision by needing to facilitate the regeneration of our town. Some of us heard some of that last night. When Wokingham Town Council made their comments on the proposed parking charges, they believed that with the regeneration of the town, and here is a quote, "with the regeneration of the town underway, this is not the right time to implement additional parking charges", okay? Recognising that these proposed charges would have an impact on the regeneration, what discussions have you had with the executive member for regeneration and the regeneration team about this?
Thank you, Keith. The regeneration team and the highways team have worked very closely together, they work on the town, as you probably meant. And I am told by the head of highways that he has spoken to the head of regeneration, and he doesn't believe that this will have any impact on the regeneration of the town. Less, and in fact, a lot less than putting up the overall prices, because of course the bulk of the business during the town is done during the day. The regeneration of Wokingham Town will make it a more attractive destination, and it's expected visitors will spend more time in the town during the day, the weekends and in the evenings. Daytime car parking charges in Wokingham Town have remained unchanged for several years, and the daytime charges again will remain unchanged this year. On balance, the council believes it's a very small charge for parking all night, Peter, okay, all night and all day on Sunday will not have a negative impact on the attractiveness of the town as a destination.
I'm sure you've got a supplementary.
Thank you, yeah, I have lots of supplementary.
You're going to have one, I'm afraid.
Then I will ramble for a bit, but can I start by referring to your good self as the leader of the council? You have said that it is with deep regret that the council has been forced to make these proposals, and that's a quote, okay? I would like to reassure yourself, the council has decided to make these proposals, nobody has forced you to do it, okay? The advantage of any consultation, and we've had a consultation that's already been referred to with more than 400 responses, is that you are able to explain why you need it, you are able to explain what the likely revenue will be. Somewhat difficult, as you've explained today, you've only recently done a survey of usage on Sundays. Never mind, we move on. What alternatives have been considered, and what you can see coming down the track? Nowhere in consultation document will you read anything about what alternatives have been considered, for example, trying to find more space in existing car parks, particularly popular ones, increasing the current charges, which have been referred to, increasing the subsidised charges for staff and councillors, marketing initiatives. Luckily, you have had some good feedback from hundreds of people, hundreds of customers, who have given their time freely to suggest alternatives, even I have suggested alternatives to you, including the ones I've just mentioned. I'll ask you whether you will take this opportunity to defer these charges, you preferred something happening in Woodley, but I couldn't hear what you were saying, you don't seem loud enough, whether you want to defer these working changes until at least after the station car park development has been completed, and use the time to have a proper look at the helpful customer feedback you have already had?
I would just reiterate that every minute, every hour, every day that goes by when we don't make these charges, it puts huge pressures on other services in the council, and some of these services fall on the most vulnerable people in the borough. And as I said, I didn't come in to carry this role out, either to increase prices or to take services away from the most vulnerable in the borough. Somewhere, we have to decide, prices go up, I'm sure that Keith would like to tell you about the six months we spent talking about the budget at our group meetings, examining everything, even in micro detail. And I would suggest that this is one of the things that we need to do to generate the income, to make sure the fabric of our roads continues to at least not deteriorate more than they have already.
I would feel much more comfortable with that answer if you were able to say that the specific things that I've referred to had been considered. We have a new car park that's just been constructed in our borough, available for public use, if anybody uses, contributing revenue...
Keith, please, Keith, I have let you have quite a long go on this. No other questioner has been allowed to come back on a second time, so...
I'm not...
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments.
I will be back in the second possible...
I'm sure you will. And the one comment I would say to you in terms of our pressure is that just to take adult social care, which I'm sure every one of us do not want to have reduced, our growth just to stand still for next year is 2.4 million pounds. Put that in context, 2% council tax rise is 1.6 million, so we still have to find 800,000 pounds just to stand still. So, a contribution for this, for repairing potholes, et cetera, has to be the way for it. So, thank you very much. I don't think we have any members' questions. So, we'll go straight into the consider any reports from Overnews Scrutiny Committee. Norman, would you like to come up and introduce this? These are on pages 19 to 62.
Thank you very much. And you have before you the report of the community parking task and finish group. The group visited each railway station and observed the parking habits in the provided car parks and in the roads nearby. You'll see from the papers that recommendations were made in relation to each station. We appreciate that there are quite a number of recommendations, and that will not be the resources to deal with all of them immediately. At the scrutiny meeting where we reviewed this report, we proposed that the executive establish a plan for review of the recommendations, and that's what I ask you to resolve tonight. It's in the interests of Wokingham Borough and our residents that as many people as possible use the railways to commute, especially if they live at a transit hole. I suggest that some of the recommendations in front of you can be taken forward quickly, and I'll give you four examples. There are a number of recommendations for the borough councils, this and Bratton, to work with the rail companies to further improve cycle storage at stations, as this is proving very popular. With the new housing developments in Wokingham near the A389M and in Bratton, there's the opportunity to introduce buses to take people to and from Twyford Station. John referred to that in discussions earlier. So, the borough council should promote discussions between the developers and the bus companies on this while the developments are being constructed. If there's a good service, then it will influence which people move into these houses. And as I said before, if we're going to leave the cars in the garage, that would be welcome. The third one is that we, the borough council, continue to promote the wider discussions and action regarding car parking and bus access at Twyford Station. Again, that was mentioned earlier. This is becoming a busy hub, and I think we'll become much more busy... much more busy. The fourth one is that there appears to be space on the Woodley side of Valley Station to create a car park with around forty to fifty spaces. Question, could this be done using SIL or Section 106 contributions to be made for sustainable travel purposes? Is so the car park would allow more people to park there, I remember do already, and provide an income stream for the borough council in the future. So I invite you to accept the recommendations in the report, agree to get these four recommendations underway immediately and to develop a plan for reviewing the other recommendations. And I'm happy to review any drafts of the plan and be involved in that process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norman. Obviously, the station was rebuilt around that time and nobody really had any cars and of course, they were close to houses, so people had access, which does include delivering sensible car parking. We built a number of park and rides and we intend to continue to expand those park and rides. And one of my ambitions is to actually look at multidestination park and rides, not necessarily calling in on the park and ride, but get a bus that stops on the outside that will take people to and from stations. And one of the things that we are looking at at the moment are turning circles at stations so the buses can serve the stations. So it is something we're very minded on. We do see with train companies that there's not much in the way of planning control on them, they want us to do what they want. They sprung on us the fact that we've taken 200 parking spaces out of the town centre, I think it was six or seven weeks ago, and we've had with no additional income, we've had to make provision to take care of some of those parking, because it just leaves their customers and it's their customers, although they're our residents, with nowhere to park, which seems pretty strange. I would recommend this, I think it's an excellent document, it's very much a starting point for what we need to address around Garehead and other stations, and I would recommend this to the executive, albeit on the fact that we are, I think it's in every report that I see, we are looking to make a saving substantial, I think it's £20 million, isn't it, Anthony, over the next four years?
About, just under £15 million.
£15 million. So some of the plans are quite costly, and they're quite financially intensive, so we may not be able to deliver some of them, but we need to address the four that Norman's spoken about. And I'm sure we'll be putting a program together over the next three to four months to see how we tackle that. And then, of course, that would go to the budgeting process as well. I recommend this report.
So I've got Anthony, Charlotte, okay, just before I move to Anthony, can I make a request of the scrutiny committee? There are twenty-two suggestions here, recommendations, you've pulled out four of them, would be helpful for us as an executive and certainly for the highways operation to know some priority on them, because clearly any plan of future work needs to concentrate on the high priority ones first. So if I can ask you to take that back to your committee and address that. Anthony first?
Couple of general questions and I think that's a specific, more specific one, not the other way around, actually. On page thirty-five, Twyford County has £1.3 million in the way of usage compared to Wokingham's £2.3 million. Obviously, Wokingham, the new Wokingham Station has increased throughput significantly. With the Adventic Crossrail, what do we expect? How many passengers do we expect or do we think might be going through Twyford once Crossrail and the new service?
East Row and all the other bits and pieces.
Do we have any idea how many more people we think might be coming through?
There are numbers, obviously, sorry, sorry. There are numbers, but they vary so much, Anthony, I wouldn't trust any of them. I was speaking to stick of you on indication of Wokingham, when the station was put in just over nineteen months ago, the GWR told me that the throughput they steam through that station has gone up by fifteen percent. So it's quite a staggering figure. But I would, I would be very surprised if at Twyford we don't see more or less the same sort of numbers that we're currently seeing today at Wokingham.
Fifteen percent, you think fifteen percent?
I would expect so.
Okay. I've just got a couple of other questions.
Very quickly.
Are we committed to finding some solutions to the Twyford? Twyford isn't going to go away, it's not going to, you know, just admit it, we're looking at another 150,000 to 200,000 people coming through this section. Presumably, we must, there must be some options that we have, you know, options for car parking rather than, you know, trying to encourage people to go by bike or by bus. Presumably, now there must be something that we've thought about or that could be done.
Yes, there are, Anthony, but as I said, under answered the question, there are discussions to be had with people in the area and, you know, but there is, there are alternatives that we will be exploring.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Following on from the comments from Mr Metacrop, I think under recommendation number nineteen, we should look at the original uses for the O9s, and then we'll bring for adopting that particular recommendation. And then on page twenty-one, going backwards, number thirteen around Winash Station, it's asking us to explore the possibility to join use of a car park with Forest School. Forest is an academy, so I just wanted to make a comment here that we are less able to influence that particular school as their academy, and we have a paper later on about academies. So I think that we need to be cognizant of that. Number twelve also, I think that I would feel more comfortable if we made a recommendation about writing to South West Trains about more cycle spaces, because it's a more proactive approach to it rather than just saying that it's within a plan, but if we took an actual action to write to South West Trains about bringing that forward potentially. And recommendation number one, it says if the council wishes to consider this suggested approach, this would require review of this existing pricing regime, so potentially looking at all of the pricing regimes throughout the whole of the council. And we're minded to ask other executive members, do they feel that this is something we might wish to do at this time, bearing in mind the financial difficulties that are faced with in the next four years?
I agree with you. I mean, I would assume, maybe that's the wrong thing, but number twelve, they will be actually writing to SW to talk to them about more cycle, because if you look at the cycle parking down at its foot and they've added to it, and there seems to be like a lot of the things in this borough, housing specifically, there seems to be a never-ending appetite for it. The academies, well, we all know just how much control they're going to have over the schools going forward, so I think you know the answer to that question yourself, but it was, that recommendation was probably made at the time when that wasn't necessarily the case. Pricing, we're going to have to be very smart about pricing. What we don't want to do is, we don't want to kill our retail town centre offer, but at the same time, we don't want our car parks to be so cheap that they fill up with commuter parking. Again, they charge seven pound, I think it is, or seven pound fifty at the station. They put in another deck in, so it would indicate to me that there is, again, another thing which is an unsatisfied appetite for. So we will have to be quite smart about our parking, four hours and three hours, four hours, that type of time which will allow people to park to go shopping, okay, but what we don't want to do, as I say, is fill, we don't want to make a car park down at the station and the multi-store we're living in to be filled up with commuters. But at the same time, we don't want to punish the residents who want to come in and use the leisure and the retail activity minimum cost. So yes, is the answer to your question, there will be some very smart, we have to get very smart with our pricing.
Angus?
Thank you, Chairman. It's a very extensive report this, but I think we must recognise that the majority of development that's going to happen, they're gone, is in the south of the borough, and therefore, although we've got existing problems, we've got to think about access to Wokingham. And I'm interested, the report doesn't really refer to the initiatives that really come about in providing a transport interchange at Wokingham Station, and high-quality buses we now have with the lions and the leopards that leap into Wokingham. And I think we need to build on that sort of principle. The other thing is, the report seems to think that everybody that gets on a train anywhere in our borough only wants to go to London, and get back again, of course. Whereas on Waterloo Line, a lot of people are travelling to Bratton, staying in Richmond, travelling to places like this. So it is, it is looking at the whole range of where people want to go, the times, and of course, the capacity. And that's the one thing that I think we're most worried about, the trains now, you usually get a seat at Wokingham, but by the time it leaves Bratton at peak times, it's full. And the longer trains will not have many more seats, so there'll be lots of people strapping in. So I think it's a good report, but I think there are other aspects which perhaps need to be addressed.
Angus, I would agree with you. I work very closely with the bus companies, and even the bus companies can't believe their success, our buses are getting full up as well. Again, another thing that we're beginning to see a real demand for, I think the leopard and the lion are probably paying back a lot sooner than they thought they would, which is a good news story for us, because it will mean that it will help us reduce the subsidies which we can use for other services. Park and ride, again, I mean, integrated transport systems have got to be the answer, so yes, I'm in this room full of passion there.
Thank you. So it is a good report. We do need that prioritisation so officers can focus. There will be a lot of things in here that we probably won't be able to achieve, as Charles already highlighted with Forest School, but we will ask the questions moving forward. So I'm going to move to the note. The recommendations are on page nineteen through to twenty-two. So we move on to the next. That's you, John. We're into the executive reports, evening, Sunday and shoot-in charges, page sixty-three.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. This is to enable us to put tracker boards in place, to enable us to implement the evening, Sunday and shoot-in charges. It is recommended the executive approve the term of making of Wokingham Borough Council's various street car parks and variation of order. Instructor office to amend signage and equipment in the car park, make it suitable, and inform those who have responded to the consultation accordingly. I would just add that we have agreed here this evening that we will be looking at various variations to that, as I've answered the question. And I think we will be mindful of all the suggestions from both Peter and Keith when we do this. But again, we are put in a very difficult situation, I don't have to explain to the executive members, and I'm sure everybody's seen in the papers just how much as a council we've suffered with government cuts.
Thank you. Any questions? And Peter, on page sixty-four, I think it's the second paragraph, you'll see a definition of what is a nightly charge. It's actually a data, it says, it's scheduled to be two to six hours, twenty-three to twenty-four hours, Monday to Sunday, for the rest of the year. Well, we'll get that checked, because it is, it is sort of six PM to eight, I was told six PM to seven AM actually was the thing, so we need to absolutely clarify that point. It's not intended to restrict it to two or three hours. It is a night time charge, and it is an all-day Sunday charge. So I will make that commitment here as leader of the council, that's what it is, okay?
That is definitely my understanding of it as well, so.
So Philip, you said you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I must also add that that's my understanding from what discussions I've had as well. The only comment I would make really on this, other than what you've said already, is that this is an opportunity that we need to be looking at with regards to ensuring that every car park now has a facility to pay by telephone. I'd like to know when we are planning to have pay-on-exits introduced, and also when we will be able to sign up the car parks with signage at the entrances to all our towns to show the availability of spaces.
Philip, that's very much my aspiration to deliver. Obviously, it's all about finance again, but I think that it's something that we would have to discuss at the executive level, but to know that would be my aspiration, that you're driving to Wokingham and you actually see where there is a parking space, that's pretty important, other towns can do it, so there's no reason why we shouldn't be.
Pauline?
Slightly contrary to what Philip's just said, I'd like to assurance that we aren't going to spend more on barriers for getting out of car parks than we are making out of car parking. Lot of councils such as Westminster, for example, use Ringo, which we already have as a service and already use. If you do that and a bit of spot policing, you could save a fortune on capital, and I think we just need to be careful what we do, that we look very carefully at any infrastructure we've put in, don't make it too complicated, stick with a little bit of enforcement, and most people will pay.
What's Ringo?
I'll show you afterwards, but it's basically an app that allows you to put in the number, which is on sticky label on the, on the, on the web post or whatever, and it recognises your car, it recognises your credit card, you can pay it instantly, it reminds you when it's about to run out, it allows you to renew when you're away from the place, it's great. So, sorry, I wasn't meant to be doing Ringo about this, but it's very good.
I think all these things, Pauline, are a balance, and like any organisation, when they're putting a piece of capital, you expect to make some form of return on that capital equipment, and I'm pretty confident that we will discuss in this at our executives going forward.
Okay, there's no other questions. Philip, every car park already has capability to pay by phone. Not Ringo, it's metric, but we've got Ringo in Winash when we rebuilt the park and ride.
We've already got a Ringo.
So moving on to the recommendations on page sixty-three, there's three of them, all those in progress show. That's unanimous. So we now move on to, I think, at least half of the audience that's probably here for, the Shymfield neighbourhood plan, pages sixty-nine to one oh two. And that's you again, John.
I would, this, this basically is part of the process of the neighbourhood plan for Shymfield. We, the officers have been working with Shymfield Parish Council very closely to come up with a neighbourhood plan which actually aligns with our own policies and guidelines, and we are now to a point where we feel that we can, that this can go for a six-week consultation for a draft of it, and to approve that the council can begin to appoint an examiner to examine the Shymfield neighbourhood plan in public.
Right, do we have any questions, of course? Anthony?
As I'm local member, I think I ought to say something about this, particularly that I think the parish council has done a stupendous job, a long process, lots of twists and turns along the way, but I'm really pleased to see it's come to fruition and that we've been able to iron out the various challenges that have beset us. And to say that I do support this and think it would be a big benefit to the local community.
Thank you, Anthony. Charlotte?
Thank you, Chair. I just also wanted to say, this is incredibly positive, this is the first neighbourhood plan that's come to this executive, and I wanted to personally put on the floor my congratulations to Shymfield Parish Council for getting there first, but also for all the hard work that they've put in into producing this plan. And it's going off consultation now, and I hope that they get many responses. and I hope that they get many responses to this. And just my congratulations, really, on getting it, as far as this milestone.
Thank you, Charlotte. It's been several years in gestation, costing them a lot of money, which Shymfield have granted, and also contributed themselves, and hundreds of man-hours from probably half a dozen people. It's quite impressive, Pauline.
So thank you, Keith. I just wanted to clarify and just make sure that I understand this correctly. This will cost the Borough Council taxpayers money that's coming from grant funding, and therefore, the cost of this is coming, is that right?
Yes. Yes, yes, there is a grant that's put in place. I mean, I would just reiterate what Keith said. I'm a member of the parish council in conjunction with another parish council, and it takes a very long draw-out process. I mean, this is a bit like entering the national when I hope this is the final jump for them. They did a great piece of work, and I'm sure that they're going to have many people ringing them up, asking for a copy of it, so they should cross out a few from like their own, so well done, guys.
I think it's a global finding in place, isn't it? Just to be specific, Pauline, on page seventy-two, it talks about the funding, the grant funding, and then we can potentially get a three thousand on top of that.
I just wanted to make sure it was on record.
I'm sure the individuals will be now setting up consultancies to help the borough on how to do this. So let's move to the vote. There's two recommendations on page sixty-nine. All those in favour, please show. That's unanimous. Shymfield again. This is the Shymfield and John Kaiser Show. SEL Community Facility in Shymfield, page one oh-three, Tom.
Again, another enterprising action by Shymfield Parish Council. I've been working with developers to develop their own district centre, which is, again, a great opportunity. You know, I think with SEL and everything to people, this creates a new, and the number of developments we're building creates great opportunities for parishes and towns of these forms. Basically, it's agreed to use the S106 contribution from the developer on the community facility to jointly be delivered by Workingham Borough Council and Shymfield Parish Council and the former Royal British Legion site in Shymfield. The sums are one point one three six from commuted sums from the south of the M4 development, one million pounds for leisure and community facilities and authorised director of finance and resources to forward fund schemes for borrowing. To take note, just to point out that the interest cost to be funded with a bridging loan, it would be seventy-five thousand pounds if it's commenced two sixteen, two seventeen, or twenty-three, two seventeen, two eighteen. Realistically, it's probably going to be two seventeen, two eighteen because of the time it takes to get these things done, the planning and all the rest of it that goes with it. But again, a great achievement by Shymfield Parish Council. It's nice to see parish councils stepping up to the plate, and I recommend this to the executive.
Charlotte?
Thank you, Chair. It's been a long haul, it feels, to get to this point, but it's really good that, this is a really good example for other areas of development around the borough. We've been able to work together with the parish, and the parish have been able to buy the legion in order to be able to do this and get the contributions from the developer in order to put the new community centre in a place that's actually much better suited to where it would have been delivered. And then actually design it in a way that, again, will best suit the community rather than the developers delivering it, which might not have actually been what the community would have wanted. So all in all, this is really a tremendous project, and I can't extend it enough to the executive. So congratulations again to Shymfield Parish Council, and it's just a very, very exciting project.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yes, so I think the tremendous amount of work done, not only by the parish council but by a couple of our community representatives. Also, I think bearing in mind some of our discussions previously, it's planned to be self-financing, so it won't cost the parish council or ourselves revenue staff going forward. And it's also been exciting to see the different ideas that have come forward to create revenue and to create facilities that people within the community will want to rent and to pay money to use. So that's also exciting to talk about. So thank you.
Thank you, Philip.
Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted with this, because it sets a precedent for all the communities within the borough. And I'll certainly be looking very closely at how this can be applied in the Matthews Green area.
Thank you. If there's no other comments?
Can I just make one comment, sorry? Yes, I mean, I'd be truthful. Development's always controversial, and it's nice to see existing residents benefiting from new development as well. So I think this is, as Philip says, it's a great model. Again, someone's crossing that line, probably there to throw a book.
Right, thank you. And that makes sense, that's even more. So I'll move to the vote. On page one oh-three, you've got the two recommendations. All those in favour, please show. That's unanimous. So we now move on to the council-owned company business, starting on page one twenty-seven. Not very much movement in terms of directors at all or change in strategic objectives to our subsidiary companies. On page one twenty-eight, you will see virtually a whole page worth of business opportunities that Optar is pitching for, or have actually won, showing you how successful this company is. It is definitely going from strength to strength. The appetite of other neighbourhood authorities to work with us has suddenly increased dramatically. I wonder why. Probably some finances pushing it that way. In terms of WHL Housing Company, two key areas there, obviously, is Phoenix, where they should, as far as I'm aware, start putting the groundwork in. They've cleared the site now. So that will soon start rising from the ashes, as per the name. And the really good news is Foster's now, has actually been let, and so they're hoping to start probably next month on-site. So those are the two developments of WHL that we've been really looking forward to. So if there's any questions, if there isn't, I can pass them. We'll go straight then to the recommendation. We've got two, one and two, on page one twenty-seven. All those in favour, please show. All those, again, it's unanimous. Moving on, quite an interesting paper here, Charlotte, the academies.
Thank you, Chair. It is quite an interesting paper as well to bring to the executive. There's been a big shift in policy recently in central government, and I think that we, by bringing this paper now, have been quite ahead of the curve, I think, by putting this together. Central Government had their budget announcements recently, and they said that all schools need to be academies by 2020 to 2022. They also had their own paper, which was on the seventeenth of March, which was Education Excellence Everywhere. And again, that is about all schools moving to academies and the methods, et cetera. There's also the Education and Adoption Bill coming forward shortly. And also, at the same time, the never stops in education the consultation on the funding formula. And one of the main themes of that is about changing how schools will be paid their money. And they're looking at, one of the main themes, we're looking at whether schools will get their money directly, rather than going into the designated school grants, which is where it goes at the moment. So schools potentially will get it in two years' time directly. So big changes. But locally, for us here in Workingham, we've only currently got nine academies out of the sixty-five schools that we have. So it's a small proportion. But within that proportion, thirty-two percent of our pupils currently attend academies. But from September onwards, that will be forty percent of our students, because we've got two more academies opening in September. So that's Bow Hunt and also a new primary in Workingham. So some of these changes may force our schools to change more quickly. And that's about the policy, about turning coasting schools into academies. So if you've got a school that is failing its pupils, they will be forced to be sponsored by an academy. And that's not where you're on convert or academy, but you're sponsored academy then. And so that's when they have to go very quickly into academyisation. We could fight this policy change, but I think that it's inevitable. And we've decided here, decided that it's better to bring this paper forward and to make it work best for our schools, rather than fight it and plan it with our schools in a way that helps our schools the best as possible and helps our students. Part of this paper is about the financial aspects of it. It doesn't go into very much detail its point, because it's a difficult landscape to navigate just at the moment, because, as I said, there's lots of papers that are coming out, and it needs to be more fully understood. Currently, we have a number of schools that have licence deficits at the moment, which means that they're spending more than they have in their budget. We are asking within this paper that we change those licence deficits that they currently have into loans. This, it makes the council's position more secure in the longer term. And within the designated schools' grants pot of money, there's enough money within that reserve that should there be any risk associated with the licence deficits, then there is enough to cover those as loans. But most of our schools, the majority, are in surplus at the moment. But as I said, there's a small proportion that have got deficits. So in terms of looking forward, we're already talking to our head teachers at the moment, and our chairs of governors, and also the dioceses, because we have a number of churches as well. We have been talking to the schools commissioner. We have a regional schools commissioner for the South East. I've been talking to the Secretary of State and going to meet him to that as well. We're also talking to the Department of Education, because there will be significant financial challenges attached to changing the rest of our schools over to academies. There are some costs laid out in this paper as a rough idea, because we've looked at a couple of case studies. In Oxfordshire, where they've done this, they reckon that the cost of about twelve thousand pounds per school to convert. In other authorities, they reckon it's less. The Local Government Association have got the figure around about seven thousand pounds. The costs are associated to do with legal costs, HR costs. Also, there are costs that we need to consider as a council, because when a school goes to an academy, they don't pay so much, such high business rates, because they then pay less. We'll bring back a paper later on to look at the financial aspects of this, but this is the paper to start the broadening in a formal process. So any questions?
John? Thanks, Charlotte. Things are shamed, isn't broken, needs to be fixed. Have you any idea where you're going to get the half a million pounds that it's going to cost us to turn it into an academy?
This is where I've been talking to the Secretary of State to say, because we've only got nine academies at the moment, if she would like us to convert all the rest of them by 2020, it's going to cost us as an authority some money for her policy. Therefore, I would like a contribution.
I would like the full money. Okay, so the only comment I would make, Charlotte, is I would ask you, because this is going to be a moving feast. There's a lot of work to be done by officers, but also by councillors. So I would ask you to think about setting up a task-and-finish working group of backbenchers going forward to assist you and the officers on evolving this. Pauline?
Thank you. I think there's, I suspect Anthony probably doesn't know the answer already, but I'd be interested to know how this rolls on through the business rates as soon as our pollution and income business rates is going down anyway. Who gets the loss? Is it us, or is it the government? They should probably know the answer to that one. But I'd be interested in that. I'd also like to thank Charlotte very much for continuing to push the Secretary of State with terms of funding for local schools. She's doing a lot of work on that. Good luck.
Thanks.
The answer, as you suspected, is that we have to sustain reductions, but also we then keep some of the increases and so balances out. And as Philip is going to do some hard work for me to give us some more business rates, hopefully that will have contributions to balancing out any losses we might have in the schools.
Thank you. If that's no more questions, I'll move straight to the vote. Recommendations are on page one three five, so it's the three of them, plus the other one after discussion of the task and finish. All those in favour, please show. Unanimous. Good luck, Charlotte. Moving on to the next one, on page one forty-five, Charlotte, Building Control Services, Pauline.
Thank you, Chair. This is a paper to extend our current shared building control services to include Westbarkham. We've already got a successful arrangement with Woodsram Mainhead. There aren't great financial benefits to the council on day one, but we think it will give us the opportunity to develop skills and enhance our ability to sell services that the building control people also already provide. It almost gives us a bit more resilience in terms of staff and skills. There's no, as I said, there's no particular financial implication to the council, but I'd like to recommend that we do this.
Any questions, John?
Pauline, we do a pretty good job of giving services. We need to be sure we don't get lumbered dead, mate.
We will make sure we don't get lumbered dead, mate.
Okay, my request is, can we monitor the savings or the operation on our shared services going forward?
Yes, we can. And in future, we'll bring back another paper that will hopefully start to explore how we can get some real revenue of this, this one, so that.
So if there are any comments or questions, move straight to the vote. On page one four five, there's four recommendations. All those in favour, please show. That's unanimous. Julian, Ray, I think you've had one.
Thank you, Chair. This is relatively straightforward. It's a request for an extension to an existing contract. It's within budget. It will allow us to have more time to negotiate a formal contract to follow this one. Happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions? So we'll have this great to the vote. You've got a recommendation on page one five nine. All those in favour, please show. That's unanimous. That's the last one. Mark, I think you're going to introduce Draw Some Community Asset Transfer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're currently reviewing all seven hundred million pounds' worth of Workingham Borough Council assets. And this is identifying lots of opportunities to transfer assets to our towns and parishes and community organisations. And we agreed at this exec in January to transfer assets if it works for both parties. And we agreed to work up a model for community asset transfer. And this is why I'm here today. This model will be transparent, consistent, and equitable as a framework to enable our local communities. And a quick highlight of the heads of terms. There'll be leases up to thirty years, which will enable grants to be unlocked from national organisations. There'll be break clauses sort of both ways. Six months' notice if it's not working, and two years' notice if we need the asset back for any reason. There's an opportunity for no rent, but just a shared profit, which could work really well, or a market rent. And we're phasing a budget of support over five years. So it's a win-win, and it's all about localism. So I'd ask you to approve these heads of terms that we worked up by a member task-and-finish group, which I hasten to add was cross-party. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? John?
I'd just like to welcome the break clause because this is a new experiment, not just for us, but also for the parish councils and I wouldn't like to see them put in a position where something changed. We live in interesting times, as Anthony and I know, they'll tell you financially. So I welcome the break clause.
Angus?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I welcome this model. I've been working with the team on some embryo ones, and Charlie and the parish council have been the leaders there. And there will be many opportunities from many of the assets we have within my environmental portfolio. John, just mentioned about the break clause. With another asset that Mark and I well know, which I won't mention, but it's quite a torturous process, set off by sports clubs needing a better assurance of tenure to be able to borrow money on the open market for development of facilities. And I'm just cautious that this will not cut off that because that was one of the early driving forces to get such transfers online and this providing the template for it. So I'd like some reassurance on that.
Yeah, this is absolutely about enabling that possibility. You know, we're finding that national bodies do want, if they're going to give up funds, a security of tenure. And we're finding that it goes beyond the fourteen years that we currently work on. It needs to go up to thirty years. So, you know, absolutely, I can assure you that it's going to enable those possibilities.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the team that's been involved with this. I think they've done a tremendous job over quite a while now of pulling all this together and they have tested this. So I think this is the way forward. I would stress though that it doesn't prevent exceptions in the future if we need longer leases for certain items. And I think that's the beauty of this. It gives us a model to go forward where there's an opportunity for up to thirty years, but it doesn't stop anything going beyond that if it needs to come through the executive. And that's important.
Thank you, Pauline. Okay, I think this is long overdue and it gives a good framework, a good basis, basis for our towns and parishes to potentially take on some of these assets. So they'll know exactly where they're coming from and where we're coming from. And I think it's, as I said, long overdue. And I look forward to many of our assets moving on to probably at least the town council, not so much the parish. So let's move to the vote. On page one six five, there's one recommendation, all those in favour please show. That's unanimous. And that brings the end to tonight's proceedings. Thank you all for attending and the last thing for the vote.